Good evening, welcome to the Select Board meeting of August 4th, 2014. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We're going to start the meeting, we have one announcement. There are board and committee vacancies available through the town, and there's vacancies on just about every committee in town, so the announcement is the Select Board is seeking residents to fill vacant positions on town boards and committees. An application and a listing of available positions can be found on the town website, www-longmetal.org, under Committee Vacancies. Interested residents should fill out an application and submit it to the Select Board's office at 20 William Street by Monday, August 25th, 2014. Applicants must be available to attend an interview with the Select Board on Tuesday, September 2nd, at 7:00 PM. There will be one make-up date for interviews on Monday, September 15th, at 7:00 PM. The next interview session to fill vacancies will be in December. So if you go to the website, you'll find under Committee Vacancies, and there's a host of vacancies, so take your pick and please submit your name. There's a lot of committees that do need some help in terms of establishing and maintaining quorum, so if you want to apply, now's the time to do it. Next on the agenda is Resident Comments. Any? No? All right. Select Board comments? All right, we can push those later. Town Managers Reports.
I just have a few little things. One, the Police Department is reporting upon a lot of scams, that residents just need to be aware, not to give out any personal information, social security, bank numbers, so on and so forth. Just a retirement in the DPW Office of Sue Ewing, just want to thank her for her years of service. Our Council on Aging Director, Emily Perkins, has submitted her resignation and will be taking another job locally, and her last day will be August 22nd, FYI. And again, if people have looked at the website, work on Edgewood Avenue and Greenwood Circle, I'm sorry, Glenwood Circle began, or has begun this week, along with Dwight Road. And lastly, E.M. Lipp, our engineer, will be attending a meeting Thursday with state officials concerning the Cooley Brook Project, so he'll have an update for you as far as timetables, so on and so forth, on that project thereafter.
Next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda, in which we have no items in it. And under Old Business, the first item of business is an appointment. We had an interview with Rose Maurice, and at our last meeting, I believe it just got overlooked because of time, and I'll take a motion, Rose has been had an interview for a three-year term for reappointment on the Council on Aging.
A motion to appoint Rose Maurice for the COA appointment.
Any seconds?
Paul, you probably want to second.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just think because of the, I'm going to suggest that because of the change at the Council on Aging Director, that we defer this vote. If people want to vote for it, that's fine, I'm going to vote against it.
Okay. The only question I would have for you, if I can ask a question of your sense you've made a comment, is what would defer in it do to the benefit of a COA Director, not knowing how long that might be, or?
Probably of unknown amount, but I think there's been a lot of discussion, and as indicated by Mr. Maurice, when she applied, and the email that we got subsequent to that about a relationship with the Director of the Council on Aging, and I think it's important that I asked that question specifically when we interviewed her, and I think that the issue needs to be further resolved, and hasn't been, in my opinion.
Well, I think that the two issues are separate. I think Rose Maurice has volunteered and done excellent work over the years, and I really appreciate volunteers who've come forward to be on these committees and boards, and I think she would do an excellent job going forward, no matter who the new Council of Aging Director is. And so I would support, at this point in time, the vote going forward, even with her appointment, where I think there showed the vacancy was still one more vacancy on the board. And she was the Director last year, and I think it'll be very important to have her on to make the transition to the new Chair for this year.
Well, I just, Marie, I respect your comments, and I understand that, I think that this is part of my concern that we have, that we haven't looked at and considered the policies of the people who are appointing, and how they may jive and not jive with what our individual policies are. I think that the approach that I want to take is to find somebody who understands clearly their roles and responsibilities, the COA relative to the Director of the Adult Department relative to the Town Manager, and so I'm going to vote against this nomination. It's a point.
And Mark, while I may not disagree with you, not about Rose, but in general, I think the Council on Aging Board had some concerns and arguments with Emily over her tenure there, and I think there's, and I've said this for years, I think our interview process is just absolutely horrible, because someone applies and we appoint. And, you know, we ask a question, and then we find out, you know, six months later, we have, we ask a question about why didn't this committee come to us, and not particularly Council on Aging, but in general. And we don't have that working relationship when we interview, because we have an interview, we really don't ask questions, and we really should delve into it. Part of the problem is, we act desperate for volunteers, because in some way we are, and then we, you know, wonder why, maybe we don't have an understanding of what the role is of a committee in general. But I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor of appointing Rose, reappointing Rose Maurice for a three-year term? All against? Okay. I'm going to skip down to the easy one next, which is the capital, the election worker appointment. So we deferred the list of Republican election workers till this meeting, and I'll take a motion to approve what was resubmitted.
I'm going to approve the new list.
I'll second that, but I'd like it to be confirmed that it's the list that we were just handed, and not necessarily the one that was in our packet, which is different.
Yes.
I don't know if we, should we be reading names, or should we?
It's up to you, if you want to read them, be my guest.
I mean, Paul, how do we?
It was recommended that you read the names. That way, there's really no confusion as to which list or anything like that.
Okay. I can tell you that my concern about that, and I didn't, you know, people weren't around, is we didn't do that for the other two, the independent and the Republican, or Democratic Town Committee, and, but, go right ahead.
Well, I think if we just state the list of today's date, it should be fine. We don't need to, because there could be some typos and everything else on this, and if we didn't do it with the other one.
What do you think is it?
Yes.
Well, no, but there's also, there's no data on this one either, so I mean, that's, why don't you, Mark, why don't you just read the list, and we'll go from there.
Fine. The list we have is Irene Barron, Joy Brown, Ralph Brown, Bonnie Campbell, Donald Campbell, Catherine Ferrero, Beverly Gregg, Winifred Hoppe, Marilyn Hurst, Eleanor Jitkowski, Joanne Munier, Susan Monks, Elaine Nollet, Marlene Rubin, John Russell, Mary Jean Ryan, George Schmack, Elizabeth Tyson, and Meredith Wheaton.
Okay. We have a second?
I seconded it, so.
All in favor? All right, okay. Next on the agenda is the capital and debt policies. We've had these submitted, and quite frankly, these are a couple of things that, we have two members of the Board not here this evening, and while that does not preclude a vote, we also establish a Subcommittee on Policies.
Oh, we did?
Pardon?
Was that the Finance Committee you're talking about?
No, we have a, we have an Operation Subcommittee.
Oh, and that's for policies? That includes policies also? Okay, because that would be Alex Gray to myself.
Yeah, yeah, and my only point, my only point is, is that perhaps, because there's, you know, the questions that I would have with these is that, you know, basically, they should go vet through the Operation Subcommittee, and then be brought back to the Board, so there's, if there's things that pop up that, you know, we have a first read into this, for example, and then the Board can get back to the Operation Subcommittee, say, here's a question I have on this, why are we doing it, et cetera. And then it should be brought back to this Board by the Operation Subcommittee.
And I guess normally, I would agree with that, but this is like our, I think our third time coming in from this Board, and really, I believe that you, Mr. Gold, have the most knowledge when it comes, or concerns, to the capital policy statements, so, you know, if two of us come back and we bring it back, it would still be your questions or concerns in regards to this that were brought up the last two times, so. And I think that we would actually be very helpful to try to do what we can tonight.
To that, Paul, if I could, to that end, I have a bunch of comments, and I don't know if we want to go through them, you know, line by line, or if you just want to have us set forward, because I had my notes where it ought to go to the, also go to the Operations Subcommittee for review, but if you want to look at this, early on, it says, "The goal of capital improvement plan, program is to improve and upgrade existing capital assets to extend their useful lives, or build the required needed new capital assets. These are considered investments, because the money extended is used to reduce costs, improve efficiency, and improve services over a multi-year timeframe." And it says, "Upgrade or extend their useful life," but I'm not sure that's definitive enough, or maybe too definitive, or too nebulous, I'm not sure, because questions I have is, does painting a building yet included? How about carpet replacement? Is window replacement extending the useful life of a building, or not? How about roofs, parking lots, the HVAC system? I think, you know, right now, we have a capital process, that what's capital is what we decide is capital the year we decide it's capital. And although that's not necessarily a great process, it's work, because it allows us some flexibility. This is intended to minimize flexibility, and to some degree, that's problematic to me. The next sentence after that, it says, it says, "Some town assets should be dedicated to the raising of revenue." I have no idea what that means, because of the fully built-out characteristics of the town. What does that mean? Some town assets should be dedicated to the raising of revenue? I have no clue what that meant.
Maybe we should be asking the Finance Committee on some of these questions, but I also look at the policy statement as being almost like the statute, and then you're talking, we can interpret it all different ways, but if we narrowly tie this down to specific interpretations, then it's really tying the hands of future Boards, if they really feel at some point in time, a specific item needs to be included, and we have decided we're going to narrowly define it. And that would be, I think, almost tradition and beliefs in the town. So we could have the policy statement, and then you can have what's tradition or done in the town, or see what the Finance Committee believes in regards to your concern.
First off, let me say, or, hold on.
Just one second. Are you done, for now?
Yeah, for now, I mean, I've got, I got paragraph after paragraph.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine. And, you know, one of the things, I just want to make a comment, that you talked about tying the hands of the future Boards. I've been on the Board nine, this is my ninth year. We have violated our own policies, or circumvented our own policies numerous occasions, and I think the very last policy we established, I forgot what it was, in fact, it was, the last one we just violated was, or, what do I say? Evaded or made an exception to was something on a tree belt, and it was just the thing we voted on over in Cheswick, or whatever road that is off of East End Road, or whatever it is. And so policies are policies, and they do not tie the hands of future Boards. Secondly, this policy talks about capital at 3%, and we know that we have a policy that sets capital at 2%. And yet, year after year, for at least the last six or seven years, we have gone well above 2%, to the point of 4%, 5%, 6%, 7% in some years. So, we get back to this thing of, we have a policy of 3%. We haven't even talked about this, if we adopt this policy, in terms of what that means to the budget. So the extra 1% and what that means to the budget, we as a Board talked about bumping up, talked about bumping up capital by a quarter percent and so forth, as years go on, so that it reaches a number, and we were talking about a number of 4% or 5%. But the other part of it is, is that if we're going to do that in any way, whether it's with this policy or bumping it up on our own, I think we have to start to be honest with the residents about how much we are spending on capital, because it far exceeds 2% or 3%. And to date, we have never been totally honest with residents about what percentage of the budget is going to capital. And if you talk about funding positions, not funding positions, and things like that, then, and what we can and can't do, we're spending a lot more than 2%. With that, I'll let you guys have the floor.
A gentleman over there.
I just want to clarify one thing, Paul. We say we have a policy of 2%. That policy is 2% that we spend on capital from the general operating revenues.
Correct.
And we have maintained that 2% expenditure from operating revenues. We have supplemented that with others, where we've gotten to the 4%, 5%, or 6% worth of capital, but we have maintained that 2% for the last number of years, and probably the last time we violated it, we were underneath the 2% because we did it for operating budget purposes.
But the reality, Paul, is, I understand what the policy says, that it's part of the operating budget, but the reality is, it's been thrown out there, we only spend 2% on capital, but yet, it really isn't 2%. It might, the policy is, we do fund the initial line item of 2%.
Right.
And then we go well above and beyond.
Through other financing methods.
Through other methods, right. I'm sorry. Go ahead, gentleman.
Richard Elias, Finance Committee. I'd like to say, first off, that these policies were asked for by the Select Board. We didn't come up and say, gee, we're going to give you policies. We were asked to work on them. And the people that worked on them, this gentleman to my right, was one of the ones, he's no longer with the Finance Committee, nor are two of the other gentlemen that worked so hard and diligently on this. They put their time, their efforts, and sweat and tears, for all intents and purposes. It wasn't just sitting down and saying, gee, what can we do? They went out to different places, they contacted different places, seeing what's going on. The town of, or city, I guess it is now, of West Springfield, got an award for bringing their policies up, and according to what I heard, their rating by the bureaus is going to be raised for that. For any specific things, I'll turn my, over to this gentleman here. And when you see terms like shall, will, and stuff like that, those were terms that we put in, with the knowledge that it is a Board's responsibility to make the decision, shall it be shall, shall it be will, or shall it be may, or we don't like this at all. We just responded to what was asked of us, and let's hope it's something that can be used by the town and your people.
Thanks. Pete Landon, former Finance Committee, Fire Battle Book. Paul, do you want to answer the question that Mark Gold had for the first part on maintenance?
With regard to the windows and carpets and things like that, I mean, I think that would still qualify, and they're building improvements, as long as the dollar threshold, because a carpet or a window replacement is going to last longer than five years, probably longer than 10 years, or maybe around 10 years. And since the dollar threshold would meet the $25,000 limit, it would still be theoretically categorized as a capital project, meeting those two criteria.
Right, I understand that, Paul, but, you know, two paragraphs later, two paragraphs later, it says, "Preventive or routine maintenance should be included in the operating budget as a separate item. These expenditures," apparently meaning preventive maintenance, "extend the useful life of the existing town assets." So, we've got the same document that says, that says, "We should be doing things to extend the life of assets as capital," and others that say it's expenses, and that's part of my confusion. I think that if we're trying to pin it down, we need to try to do something differently, either that or not.
Mark, preventive maintenance is not windows, it's not carpet and stuff like that. It's what should be happening in this town. We have a fine department that does all the repairs and everything for us that can be done. They should be going through the buildings once or twice a year, seeing what may be the problems, and see if it can be taken care of before it becomes a very financially burdensome problem for the town. That is what preventive maintenance is.
The media definition section possibly be added, the, just two issues were brought up in the last meeting here, and in, those two were the rate of debt repayment, and we went back and looked at all the other best practices, cities and towns in Massachusetts, and, you know, in collaboration, that can be tweaked, it had six, there was some comment about 65% in 10 years. We've had some comments from the Moody's, that our amortization schedule is, right now, weak, or whatever their language is, at 48% in Paul's calculation, so you could modify that and make 65 down to, say, and make it a goal of 55%. And the language in some of the cities and towns is make it a goal, a policy, you know, Richard went over the alternatives, will, should, some towns say, will attempt to reach a percentage of amortization of, say, this case, 55% in 10 years of the existing debt. Our existing debt is roughly $56 million, Paul, in that neighborhood. It's important for the bond rating agencies, so that's an adjustment that can be made, 65 becomes 55. The second issue that was discussed was the range of debt service as a percentage of general fund revenue, and we had in there 10% to 12%, which, as Paul mentioned at the two meetings ago on capital, was that the bond, standard and poor's guidelines are 8% to 15%. So we picked a range in consultation with the person who has to live with us, more the CFO, and narrowed it somewhat to 10% to 12%. So, that one could be tweaked also, if that was your desire, but those are the only two metric comments I heard at the last meeting. So, Paul, turn it over to you, you got some comments on your cheat sheet.
Just, I mean, very, very, very quickly, I mean, there are some differences between the current policy, obviously, and what is being proposed here. Just by definition, there is inconsistency with the capital planning committee currently has, what we have on the books now, and what the proposed policy is, so that would have to be something that's worked out, either at one level or the next. Certainly, the funding policy is also another area, it's a 3% recommendation that's in this recommended policy versus the actual 2%. And, I mean, after that, there's a few words in there that still need to be tweaked, which I can very much go over, it has no bearing on any of the meaning of the policies. The debt policy, again, we took ratios from standard and poor's recommendations, their recommendations on how they look at the financials of the communities, anything below 8% that will probably have too low of a debt service product. The 8% to 15%, they evaluate as moderate, anything above 16% or 16% to 20% is an elevated rating, and above 20% is a high rating. For FY15, our ratio is 8.9%, so we are just above, in the moderate range, still kind of on the low range, you know, for numeric purposes. That principal payback, again, it's pushed back because of the first issue with the Long Metal High School, and I don't think, probably, we'll probably never be in that position again, and we will always meet these, whether it's 50% or 65% payback within 10 years. I'm pretty confident that we'll be in that range within a couple of years. Right now, our 10-year payback is around 50%, it's 49% actually. The general fund by itself is 44%, but when you add the debt service on the water and sewer, that's outstanding, it becomes 49%. Again, really because of that first bond issue with the high school pushed out to 27 years, that's what created a lot of this, a lot of these low ratios. It is true that what Moody's has found in our last bond rating, their statement under challenges for the town of Long Metal, is that they do have a statement that we have a below-average rate of principal amortization. So anything that we can do to accelerate that amortization schedule with any bond issue that we have, would be looked favorably upon Moody's. I will say something, you know, again, what Richard had said, I did read in the paper where West Springfield actually had an upgrade from Moody's, and they did recommend, or they did make the statement, that part of the recommendation was because of the policies that they had in place. They had a lot of things identified, they must have been solid policies, I don't know specifically if they have, you know, a debt management policy or a capital, but Moody's was very happy with the policies that they had in place, and it reflected well on their financial management. So, it is something that, right now, if we improve upon, is going to help us. I think we're at a stage that I don't think anything's going to hurt us with these policies, unless something is just totally out of whack, which I don't think will ever happen, but anything that we do in these regards will probably help us when we go, at some point in the near future, for our next bond rating.
Paul, when did we find out from Moody's that our amortization schedule is weak?
That was October 2012, when we did, I believe that was the second issue maybe for the high school. That was a statement in their, in their analysis, that they wrote back to us with the full rating, when they gave us the AA2, they write a narrative with that, and it was in a narrative with that.
Because this is the first that I've heard of that, and I don't know how that affected other bonds that we've issued, and whether or not we accelerated the amortization to help alleviate that.
We haven't issued anything since then, Paul, for long-term debt.
Just the bands, which isn't affected by Moody's, okay. So, you know, I've got to say, the other thing that bothers me is policies, you have free cash going to pay for capital. And every year, we talk about free cash, and every year, we talk about, which is just overtaxing people, and every year, we say the same thing, we need to tighten the budget so that free cash comes in less and less, and we don't do it. It's over, constantly over a million dollars. And to take a million dollars at the end of the year and put it into capital, again, which will put us above the 3% and the 2% that we actually have, I think is just wrong. I think that money should go back to residents, but we don't do that. We tell them we need X number of dollars in the budget, we don't do a good job of budget, and I understand it's 2% of the budget roughly, but every year, it's consistent, we don't make any headway in reducing free cash, and then we want to have a policy that will say, take it and go put it into capital. The other thing I have to say is that if we're going to start worrying about what Moody's and Standard and Poor's thinks on everything that we do, we're going to be managing the town to the rating agencies, and I have a disdain for those particular agencies, because in 2008, they told the world everything was fine, and they told the world the companies were creditworthy and all that other stuff. I think it's bad policy, as a community, to govern towards a rating agency. I understand the effects on bonded, I understand the effects of what it would cost the town if the ratings went down, but our ratings aren't going down. And I just, to keep throwing Moody's out there and Standard and Poor's, I think is not the reason to change things. I think the simple thing that you can do with the next bond issue is accelerate the amortization schedule. I don't think you need a policy to correct something that might be seen as a negative. And, you know, we established an OPEB trust for other post-employment benefits, because we said, "The rating agencies will look favorably on us," and I don't think we've had an upgrade from Moody's, because we established an OPEB fund. And the majority of the Commonwealth, well over 300 other communities, do not have an OPEB fund, and they haven't been downgraded because of that, at least to my knowledge, maybe some have, but I haven't heard of any. But I won't support a policy that says, "Take free cash and go put it into capital" at the end of the year, when we're supposed to already have a capital plan. And I, again, the number 3% bothers me, I think the Board, the Board needs to decide what we want to do with capital, and to have it clear-cut and honest with the residents of how much of their money is going into capital of a year, which exceeds the 2% current level that we're at. Anyone else?
We need to review our policies. They really haven't been changed in years, and this, I think, was piggybacked on the back of going with the GFOA standards and looking at best practices, and the Finance Committee sat down, they, a lot of work was put into changing the way the budget was going to be laid out, in order to help us in incremental budgeting, and really improving, making a difference on where we're going in our budgeting in the future. the future. And the next step was going to be putting in new policies. The finance committee, my understanding, went to see what was the best practices across the Commonwealth, and came up with a policy statement. And I know it's a lot for us to chew on, but maybe we should take one section at a time, like at the capital policy statement, to see if we're comfortable with this statement before we move down to the budget funding and the debt management, and try to make some progress in putting in new policies. Because it's not just, I think, for the funding, the Moody's and, and our bond ratings, but it's also good practices on how we're going to better run this town. And I think a lot of work's been put into best practices, and I think we should look at making some changes. So, are, is, are there any concerns with the first half on the capital policy statement? Or should I begin with a motion to adopt it, and then we'll go into discussion?
You can make a motion to anything you want to do, because.
Maria, before you do that, I, you know, I, I mean, I've read through part, just now part of this, that, that concerns me. Literally, I, you know, I'm, I'm not quite sure of the, you know, what, what this capital policy statement is intended to do, and how it changes from what we currently have as, as a capital policy statement. You know, the, I think it, it might tend to bind our hands more than we want it, our hands to be bound, and so I'd, I'd, I'd be concerned about it. And again, it, you know, to try to define the way it is, what capital is and what, what deferred maintenance and maintenance is, is problematic for me. And that's just this particular section. You know, I, I'm not convinced that it's doing, it's, it's doing anything different. So, the biggest thing is, I'd love to see a red-line version that compares what we have versus this, because all I've got is a new version, I have not put the two together. You know, I, I'm not sitting here trying to rewrite this thing, but, because it's, this isn't the place to do it, but, like I said, to.
Then.
No, go ahead.
I have a question, is, what did you look to improve in rewriting the, was getting capital policy statement?
If you want to look at the existing policy and do a comparative, you know, we can do that. There, sixty-five percent, seventy percent is current practice. There's some improvements in our, in the opinion. But I, it is a select board policy. When I joined the finance committee, there were two sets of policies in this town. It was a finance committee policies, and there were select board policies, and I can probably see how they evolved, because getting a common agreement, you know, is, is difficult. But I think our goal always from day one was to get one set of policies, and working with Paul to draft something for you. I think you can wordsmith it the way you want to, do better definitions, change numbers. It, it is a select board policy. So, we were basically a drafting group for you, and I think at this stage, you should take it. And because the two issues that I came out of the last meeting with, we, we just talked about, these are new issues that I had in here at the last meeting. So, we're, it's hard to address them if you get into wordsmithing. So, I think, you know, maybe your policy committee should look at it and send back to the, to, to your group, what changes you want to make to three percent is our best recommendation. It's five hundred thousand dollars. I mean, two percent on a operating is fifty-five million, it's a million one. And you're looking at, at three percent, and if you, I did hear at the last, if you wanted to incrementally go a quarter, a quarter, a quarter. But the key point that we wanted to make is that, like, for years, it included debt service in that number, and that it is not in there. Debt service is four million dollars a year. So, Paul's statement about a lot, you know, the capital each year is true, because we're, we're doing capital at eighty-five million dollars as a total for the last thirty, thirteen years, for the town, including the high schools. So, the, the amount of capital is way beyond the operating policy of two percent that we've been operating with. But for, for years, the chairman of the finance committee pointed out that we've used that two percent to include debt service, and he felt like there was so little money for capital in this town, that we were underfunding Ned Steiger, and he can come in and testify on it, Mr. Gold.
So, no, I'm, I'm just curious about this debt, you, you've said it now a couple of times, Peter, debt service.
Let, let me clarify that. That, that goes back years ago, when we did the police and fire station.
Right, that was the, and that was, okay, and I recall that, because I was the victim of that when I was chair of capital planning. Right, okay. We haven't done that in the last seven years.
We haven't done it since.
Right, but.
Oh, yeah.
It's important to make, those are the kind of distinguishing comments that are in here, to make sure that doesn't happen again.
But, but, Peter, I can argue, and, and I'm now on the other side of the table here, but one could argue, maybe that is a good thing to do, to, to use the capital stabilization. I mean, I don't know that it is, and clearly, it was terrible at the time when we had, we, we literally were using sixty percent of the capital stabilization funds every year to pay off debt on the public safety complex, and had nothing left to do real capital improvements for. But it, at a time when the money was appropriated, which was before I came to be active in the community, you know, it made some sense, because we desperately needed a public safety facility, and there was no other way of financing it, because it wasn't going to pass through a two-and-a-half override. I mean, I'm not saying it's, 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 it's good policy, I'm just saying it, it was, it was good operations at the time, or it was a, it was a workaround to, to some degree. I mean, I, you know, and, and I really don't, I mean, that's, that's a small point that we shouldn't be arguing. I think the biggest discussion we have here is, you know, currently, we define capital projects as greater than ten thousand dollars, with an estimated useful life of ten years or more. Now, that ten thousand dollar number has been in effect since this capital stabilization policy was first adopted, probably ten, twelve, fourteen, and it, and it deserves some inflation and some adjustments. I, I, I agree with that. But reducing the useful life down to five years, I think we have to discuss whether a, something that's only going to be around five years is really worthy of a capital, capital investment, or if that's not a, a maintenance. And I don't know the answer, and I can't even give you examples of things that may fall into that five-to-ten-year category. But, you know, we, we constantly, early on, we talked about computers and computer systems that aren't going to be around in ten years, are they capital, or are they not capital? And stuff like that. But I think those are the issues that we need to look at when we review this, so that we can charge our capital planning committee with, here's what you should look at, and here's what you probably ought to, ought to pass back to the, the town to deal with as, as, as a operating budget item. And, and the rest of this on capital, I think, is all, you know, really words we want to, want to get right, but aren't, aren't critical, but, but certainly, that threshold is. And, and I'm not saying what you folks are recommending is wrong. I just, it's, it's a change, and I think we need to understand why that change is recommended.
Right.
May I make a recommendation, in that, I, instead of the policy committee, it seems that this really falls into the finance committee, because this is really central to budgeting every year. And maybe we should just take it in bites, and start by looking at the capital policy statement, get a red-line version, and then bring it back to the board to vote on, one section to one section. Because this is, we're now going on several months before we've even made progress in these. And I think the discussion made it clear that there are some things we need to review and change. And then I didn't realize, we had two sets of policies, which doesn't sound like a good way to go. So, it, I think it is worthwhile for us to really attempt to make some changes, and it might not be perfect, and maybe future boards will make changes in it. But at least we can say that we have looked at and revamped our, our capital policy statements, and funding, and everything else as we go along this year. Do you think it fits into finance committee?
With the finance, that finance?
No, you're, you're a subcommittee.
Oh, the finance subcommittee? You know, fits anywhere we want it to fit, very honestly. I mean, you know, my sense is, it's a policy. The biggest thing is, I think, everybody has to say, as Peter indicated, you know, can you go from two percent of, of revenue, tax revenue, to three percent in a single year, without having a detrimental effect, or at least a measurable effect on the rest of the, remember that, that this is a, you know, there's general government, and there's, and their funding in their school budget. We're taking, you know, one percent of total revenue, but it's going to impact, I suspect, more of the general government than it will the schools, unless the school committee agrees that, in that first year, they're going to take part of the, the reduction. Because, you know, we're not going to, we can only raise our taxes two-and-a-half percent, and if we take one percent of that immediately for, for, for capital, it's going to have a significant impact. On the other hand, you, maybe you do, as Mr. Landon indicated, you, you phase it in over a few years and increase it. You know, the, the comment I saw in here, which concerns me, is, you know, the, the argument for three percent is that we need to catch up on deferred upgrades, sidewalks, water piping, and, and, you know, we're way beyond catching up. I mean, we're at the point where, in, in my lifetime, and I hope to live a long, long time, we wouldn't catch up with this one percent. So, it's not a catch-up. It's, it's a, you know, we need to step up our game and, and start spending more money. Because catch-up seemed to me to imply, we're only going to do it for an interim period of time until we've caught up, when in fact, you know, as everybody tell you, we're not, that's not going to happen.
We never catch up.
You never catch up, right.
And I think this board has made that clear, that this is a concern we have, and, with Mr. Foster's presentation last December. And so, I, okay, the subcommittee, the policy or operational subcommittee, I'll take, sit down with Mr. Grant and do the capital policy statement, at least take one bite of this, bring it back to the board at the next meeting, if we could have a red-line version. And then we will work with the finance subcommittee on some of the reasons behind some of the changes, so we can maybe at least try to get one bite of the apple in the next meeting. But I have one question, though. You said something that was interesting, that you have the policy statements here, but there's also goals, and the goals can help move us. And so, is there a set of goals, or are these just things that you've had in discussions?
I, I heard the word restrictive two or three times, and that's not the intent, nor do I see it as restrictive. It's, it stops short on the metrics of what other towns have, and, but, the words in there, if they're, I've seen in other, I've got a pile of policies here. Will, should, goal of, is one I was reading in Concord and Sudbury today, of fifty-five percent, that's that amortization issue we're talking. We're in there at sixty-five, you were critical that it was too aggressive, and that's the only reason we brought up the Moody's comments, because whether or not they, they caused the two thousand and eight housing debacle or not, unfortunately, they're still the standard for, for city and town ratings. So, or the, the word that I found, wordsmithing, if, if you're looking for a way to have a policy not be a hard policy, will attempt to, is about as loose as you can get. And, you know, where would, would I go if I were a, you know, select board member, you know, between, I, will, should, goal of, or will attempt to, I leave it to you.
So, Paul, I'm willing to sit down at the, arrange a subcommittee meeting where we can sit down together, and then make a presentation to the board, and so we could get at least a partial vote on the next policy.
Okay.
Well, I just wanted to just kind of finish a couple of comments for whoever's looking at this again. I think one of the, I, I also personally have a concern that says, it's, you know, and Peter, you're, you're right, this is kind of more restrictive than I want, we can make it a little bit less restrictive. Because it says free cash will also be used to fund capital improvements, and I can envision things like, you know, we might have legal settlements, we might have one-time initiatives that we want to fund as seed money to, to a new town program, or things that we want to spend that's not capital, but that we might want to use free cash for. And this, this would be too restrictive in that manner. So, I, I can see loosening that up, as you said, will attempt to, or, you know, will, will make every effort to, or whatever it is. But I think some of that wording kind of concerns me when you look at them.
Can you send me those notes?
Yeah.
So, I'll have them, and then we can work through it, and then maybe make off your recommendations, and if you have any other, Paul, so we'll have some possible changes in when we bring the policy back to this board.
Yeah, you know, the other thing Maria just says, it's just, just a, I think, a note, says CPA funds is authorized by the Community Preservation Committee, it's got to be changed to recommended, because it's the town meeting that authorizes.
Okay. And you have that in the notes?
I got a bunch of stuff like that.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
There's one thing I'd like to say before I finish up on this. First off, thank you very much, Peter, for your time on the committee, and for taking your time not being on the committee to come in here and answer the questions for the select board.
And I'll be chasing you down later, when we get the subcommittee meeting together. Thank you.
Chief Seattle's good at that.
Okay.
Next on the agenda is a town property name and policy approval. And Paul, I don't know if you have any background on it, what's the?
Excuse me, Paul, there was debt policy, we're just going to put that in the same category as the capital policy?
Yeah, we might as well. And I think that some of this is that, there should be a, number-wise, the numbers, we should probably put that on our next agenda, too, to look at the potential numbers of the debt and the capital, like the three percent and.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so you like that as part of it? Okay, so the potential, so, of what last budget would be? Maybe I should look at FY fifteen?
Well, just to look at the numbers in the capital, the debt policy, that, at our next agenda for the finance subcommittee, to look at the, the impacts of what that would be to the budget.
So, I need to get you, or?
No, we'll, we'll take care of that. The debt policy, we'll take care of it.
So, are you, I'll do the capital, and you'll do the debt policy?
That sounds what it's.
Okay, so we'll split it up, and, and that, then we'll both bring it, that makes it faster, just to get through it.
Yeah, okay. And then, so on the, the draft, there's a draft naming policy for the town, is, and I'm just, Paul, I know you're here tonight, do you have any background on that, or so what's driving it, or?
I, I, I don't have any background, you know, the, the best I can gather, I do hear some conversation that, you know, people do want to have certain things named, and we're kind of just waiting for the policy, the recommendation, I think, through the, to the Parks and Recreation Department. And I'm not quite sure what piece of property or what they want to name, but I think they're the ones who are kind of asking for it.
Okay, fine, Mark.
Yeah, just to kind of put some comments on the record here, I, you know, it, one, a couple of things are concerned to me, and that is that I think the number of people signing the petition, according to this, is low. I mean, we require a hundred signatures to get something on our special town meeting. I think it ought to be at least that number to get something in town named. But more importantly, I think if we're naming something, it ought to be a town meeting that has to approve naming of, you know, naming of a, of true, real property or, or land, as opposed to even just the select board. I, I understand select board's elected as representatives, but it, it gets awfully permanent when you start naming properties and buildings and things like that. And I, you know, I personally have some concerns also about, you know, the time we wait between, you know, when somebody's done something and, and worthy of being named, and, and when we actually do the naming, sometimes, you know, things come up after, after a year or two, that you say, gee, maybe we shouldn't have named this after somebody. But, but I think that's, those are my big comments, are that, that I think that, that we ought to have, certainly more than, more than just fifty people signing a petition, it ought to be proved by town meeting, in my opinion. I mean, I can see it vetted through the town manager, I can see it vetted through the select board, but I, I can't believe we rename a, a, a major building or a major piece of property. Now, I don't know how that, that speaks to things like the Dagostino Gym, or the Molly McAvoy Playground, and I'm not sure how those happened, and how those would happen in the future. But, but, you know, we, we've done it in the past in, in many different ways, and I think, I agree, we need a policy, I'm just not sure this hits all my hotspots.
Okay, I mean, I'll bring those comments back to Stephen, obviously.
I don't know, Paul, anything? Because my, my comments are simply, I don't believe that we should be naming things, public buildings that people pay for through their tax dollars, naming that after anybody, particularly employees, who get paid by the town to do their job. And, and I, I, I can't see why we would name any public building or piece of property after someone. It's just, it's, it's funded by taxpayers, it's contiguous, it's not, it's not something that, that anybody paid for. And I understand what might be driving this is, you know, people seeking donations and so forth, but I just, I don't, I don't, that's just my own personal opinion, I don't believe that we should be taking public property and naming it after people. Maria, do you have anything?
Well, my concern is, like, you talk about a large piece of property, but sometimes there's small things, and sometimes residents do want to honor someone for either their work, or in memory of, and it could all go to town meeting. If, up till now, I think most places, it goes through the select board for smaller items, maybe larger items. think most places, it goes through the select board for smaller items, maybe larger items, but I don't mind it going all through fall town meeting. Fall town meeting will require hard, their signatures, a warrant in the, in the spring, and the annual will be 50. So the easiest way to solve that would just say everything goes through town meeting, and, um, then the residents can decide if there's going to be memorial or in honor of. But often, it's just rooms, and I, I think the school committee especially probably does this frequently. And so it'd be nice to get their input on how they feel about it going to town meeting as a new naming policy. I think this came up because, um, we, about a year ago, were, that we heard something was going to be named, and the question was, do we have a policy? And I don't think we really had a real definitive policy, so the town manager has sat down and tried to pull together from other towns what would be a good policy. And I think it's always worth it to have set policies in the future. So I, I see nothing wrong with it going to town meeting, if, if that's the way the board's looking. So let's bring that back and see if the town manager has some insight on why we might have a problem with it going to town meeting.
I, I would just ask, you know, my observation is going, looking through this also is, because it is including the school property, you know, does it need to be stronger than a policy and actually be a bylaw?
Mm-hmm, there you go.
You know, because the, the school committee is, you know, I think they already have their own policy in place regarding this, and if it's going to be under one authority, being the town meeting, everybody has to be, um, you know, in line, and town meeting, bylaw may be the way to get it all structured.
Maybe we should ask our chair to reach out to the school committee chair.
Yeah. I'd also like to, I, I'd like to understand what, again, what's driving it. I, I just, to, to create a policy that we don't have tells me that somebody wants to do something, and someone's afraid to do something because there's not a policy. And so we, we actually may have, may have, and I'm speculating that we created a policy because we have a request over here which isn't necessarily 100% public, and we want to make sure that the request fits that, or the policy fits that. And I just, because there's things in here that don't, that, that are really, you know, talks about someone who makes a financial contribution, what if it's a corporation and a corporation's Budweiser? And there's nothing in here to talk about moral standing, character, things like that, that we have to be cautious of, that if, if we're saying it's based on, you know, it could be based on a, a financial contribution. And I know the schools have looked at things like that when they talked about signage in the schools and stuff to make sure that it was, when they've done advertisements and programs or something for plays, that it makes sure that it's, there's, it's not something that is, you know, for alcohol or tobacco, things like that. So I think there might be something, if we do adopt it, something in there like that, that, that at least has some prohibitions to protect the town from something like that.
So should we put this to the next meeting?
Yeah, I think we should go back to that, with, with the, the questions we have, like Mark talking about town meeting, if that's right, or, um, and maybe bring it back and, and have it come back before the board, go back to the town manager.
But what's the, what's the intended action by the board the next time? To either ask that it become, come up at the fall town meeting for a, by, or the spring town meeting for a bylaw change, or is it to, to, to try to sort through this? I mean, just to put it off for a month without knowing why we're putting it off for, for two weeks?
Well, I think, I'm sorry, go ahead, Maria.
I wanted input from the school committee, to, because they're doing, as you said, it's, it's, if we're putting a, a policy on, uh, public property naming policy, we really should have the input of the school committee. And then, I think, your concept of taking it to town meeting is an interesting one. I think I'd like to run it by the town manager, and then, um, Paul, I like your idea. If we're really doing that, maybe it needs to be a bylaw. We might be using a hammer to solve a simple problem, and, um, I'd like to have more input maybe from the other select board members to see, do we really need to go this far, or can we trust the select board of the future to just really keep in line that we're not naming things after Budweiser?
I think Williams Distributing would reject the-
There's nothing wrong with Budweiser.
Who, by the way, had given a scoreboard to the Little Leaf Field. But I, I guess, Maria, one of the, you know, I, I respect the school committee, but, you know, the, part of the, the history of the school committee, being able to do this, was when they were stewards of facilities. You know, the school committee for the last eight years has not been a steward of any facility. And so the question is, who actually is the school and school, you know, school facilities under, domain is it under? And, and I think that's part of the issue, and maybe Paul Pesterzak had it right, when it's, it's really a town, town facility. It's not, you know, it's not necessarily the, a school, that the school committee has the right to name things after somebody, or the, or the, or the select board has the right to name things after, after somebody. That's all town property. So I, I hear getting, getting other input, but I think the bigger thing is, I'd like to see us come to a, a conclusion as a board of where we want to take this for resolution. Do we want to take this to have it, yes, as a board, we're comfortable with going to the town manager and the board deciding, or we're comfortable as a, as a, as a select board, we want it to go as a recommendation from the select board to a town meeting as we would another warrant article, for example? And, and what rises to the level of, of town meeting? Is it, you know, is it a, is it a physical structure? Is it, is it a ball field as opposed to the, you know, something else is, you know, and, and how do we get around defining it? And I think that's part of it. You know, we have a lot of stuff in this town, and to, to start naming, having a single naming policy that covers everything from, you know, a, a $77 million high school, right down to, uh, you know, a, a garden patch of, of land that might be 50 feet by 50 feet, may be of very different policies.
The other thing I'll say is, it always had been a topic within the school building committee. Um, you know, there was always, you know, thoughts that, you know, somebody was going to make a donation, whether it be for the lights, uh, outside, uh, new stadium lights, whatever. Um, and the school building committee always referred it back to the school committee. Um, so again, I just, I throw that out there. I don't think anything has been formally named with regard to this new building, but, uh, again, the school building committee has always referred to the school committee, thinking it, you know, being the people who are, actually occupy the building for the most part, as opposed to maybe the, you know, the taxpayers who actually paid for it.
And if you really want to do it, you put it at a vote at a, on a, on a ballot, if you want people to weigh in as opposed to town meeting. When you're talking about people's money and, and the naming of a building, um, that's being paid for by taxpayers every year, I, I just, or whatever it is, I just, I have, I don't like it when it happens on the federal level. You know, we, the, the city of Springfield names a DPW facility after a congressman because he, he secured the funding. Well, it wasn't the congressman's money, it was taxpayer money. And, and that's, and it's been done, you know, Senator Byrd in West Virginia has more things named after him than any other person in America. Um, that's just the way it is. But I don't think that's right. And I think that when you start talking about the town and what you're going to sell, selling naming rights as, as opposed to naming something, having, you know, is different. So we have a pool that's named after the former director of parks, uh, or pa- well, you know, well-passed director of parks, and, and that was decided by the park board at one point. But, you know, does that justify the putting a person's name in that, name on it versus someone who says, I'll give you a million bucks to put my name on your pool or something? I mean, that's, but I agree with you on that. Okay, so we'll send it back, but, and, and the thing is, the, and I think, Mark, that's a good point. Do you, do you have a bylaw that goes over something that's, uh, the naming of a field where they put a plaque on the fence at the backstop at a ball field or something versus the naming of-
Oh, no, the police department, right.
Oh, yeah. Okay. All right. Next on the agenda is town and labor council appointments. Um, I know that we do this annually, and it is on the agenda to appoint, um, where is it here? Joel, Attorney Joel Bard as our, um, uh, land use counsel, Attorney Gordon Quinn as our, uh, labor counsel, and for the firm Sullivan and Hayes, and Attorney Joel Bard is from Copelman and Page, uh, and for town council, the attorney David Martell from Dority, Wallace, Pillsbury, and Murphy.
I move to approve the so-named council.
A second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, I, I just like, I think, I think this deserves, deserves a discussion, even though I'm not ju- jumping up and down against it. I think people at town need to understand how much money we spend on outside council, and, and this year, our number one outside council that we spent money on, although it was reimbursed to us, was, uh, Murphy, Hesse, and Toomey, and Lehane, which was for the MGM support. They're not a, a standard town council, they were special council that we hired. But I think that people need to understand that we do utilize these, these council members. People have seen David Martell here from Wallace, Pillsbury, Murphy, over the last couple of weeks, talking about issues having to do with zoning. Uh, what they don't see perhaps is Gordon Quinn from Hayes and Sullivan Hayes and Quinn, who's been our labor counsel. I think last year, when we were negotiating three or four more town labor councils, we used them extensively. I felt that, you know, the, those, the support and the, we got from them was worthwhile. I would also comment that personally, I think they bring a consistency that, or a, a institutional memory that has value to the town, because the select board members come and go, we've got a relatively new town manager, and so the institutional memory we've had has been of value. And clearly, land use has been quite specialized, and I think our zoning board and our planning committee used the Copelman and Page and Joel Bard fairly extensively. So I'm, I'm going to support these, even though from time to time, I've clearly had differences with each one of them.
Yeah, and I'm going to support them too. I think Dave Martell, over the years, has done a wonderful service to this town, and is always available whenever any of us have concerns. And I can't tell you how many late hours our employment attorneys have been sitting here with us and trying to solve this. So, um, yeah, I'll definitely be supporting the reappointment.
Okay, before they call the vote, my comments are, I'd really like to see the board discuss this at, at more length. Um, I think this past year, we've seen on more than one occasion, um, some areas of concern with our councils, and I think that it deserves more than just, um, a, a vote, a simple vote of the board. I think it really should be something to discuss, and I don't see any reason why bids aren't put out to, to look for a council. Uh, we go to the MMA meeting every year, we see many council, uh, law firms there. I just, I think that the, the board has had a few instances this year which have led me to believe that it might be time to at least, um, review whether or not we have, there, there, we have the best council available to us, and I, I'm going to vote against it. So, um, with that, I'll call the vote. All in favor of reappointing, uh, the three firms as our council? Opposed? There we go. Next on the agenda is approval of the special town meeting article submission dates. We have a date, um-
Town meeting is scheduled for November 18th. These dates, I, I just wanted to get them forward to you people, so we can get this out earlier, a little bit earlier than, than usual. So if people do have citizens petitions or anything like that, that they have ample time, almost 60 days, to get it back into you folks. Um, again, it's more of a draft to see if you agree with the dates that are outlined here. They can certainly be modified. This has not gone anywhere except to you folks.
Okay, and, and these, have you, or, as in the past, have these dates going, working backwards from town meeting?
Uh, they work well, as far as we're concerned. It does put, from, from, from the select board standpoint, um, you know, the closing of the warrant would be scheduled for October 6th, which is your, your regularly scheduled meeting, your first Monday in October. Um, it is hoped that you would have it, the warrant signed on the 20th, your next meeting. Now, I don't know how, how you folks like that little window, or don't like the little window, and it could possibly go as late as the first meeting in, um, in, in November, which I believe is November 3rd, but that would be the drop dead date. It would have to be signed on the 3rd. That allows the 14 days before the, the town meeting. Um, and so it gives you almost 30 days in order to act. So, um, again, that's why it's here, for that very discussion.
And, and it's just, just to remind people, at this town meeting, we do not send out the warrant articles ahead of time like we do for the annual town meeting.
We do not send it out to every, every resident. It'll be, it'll certainly be posted, it'll be available, uh, at certain locations, if people do want copies of it. I mean, we can certainly get them out to them, but it will not be delivered to their home.
Just so we state that now, because I've known in the past, some people have come to us and said, you never sent us the warrant articles.
Right, and we do not do that in the fall. We only do that for the annual town.
And, and actually, that affords us to potentially have that first meeting in November, a meeting where we could vote on it, or last meeting of October, to vote on the, the warrant, because you have that extra time to not go to the printer. So I just, yeah, so I just, you know, those dates are there, they're, they're a lot closer than what we do for the annual town meeting.
Correct.
Yep. Any issues with the dates?
No, so my question, so it's, uh, citizens petitions are now due seven weeks before the actual town meeting, and we're not sending it out to printer till-
We don't send it out to the printer at all.
Two weeks before.
No, we don't send it to the printer.
Oh, we don't even go to printer? So the reason it's seven weeks before special town meeting is because it's going to take a month for the select board to, to do that?
Well, it's not necessary in citizens petitions, but it's the other warrant articles that are submitted internally, that if you folks have questions, you know, if, if the questions are asked on the 6th of October, they may not be answered on the 6th, and we may have to go to the 20th to get you the answers regarding the questions on the 6th. So hopefully, by the 20th, we would have answers, but we're also saying that if all your questions aren't answered on the 20th, you would still have one more shot on November 3rd, um, in, in order to have whatever questions you may have, or if you have a special meeting in between, it could be done. But again, it was kind of looking at ample time with, with everyone involved here, um, to get this basically in place, give you folks ample time, um, give the citizens notice, 60, you know, almost 60 days notice if they want something on the, uh, on the warrant article, that they have time, we'll get this out, you know, tomorrow if it's approved and posted. So it kind of, you know, we're trying to go a little bit earlier to buy more time actually for citizens petitions, more than anything. But again, it gives you folks, again, almost a month to approve any warrant articles, not necessarily citizens petition, but anyone that are submitted internally.
And so we're not really doing anything with the citizens petition. It's the internal ones that we-
It's the internal ones that you folks have to decide on, whether, whether you're going to approve them, not approve them. Get, again, you normally have questions on, on, on a few of them. Um, whether, again, you put them on or not is your decision, but you normally do have questions on, on a few of them.
And so we're supposed to, the schedule is, we're going to set the warrant on-
You would, you would sign, at the way that it's right now, is that the closing of the warrant would be on your October 6th meeting. So we would have all the warrant articles submitted in draft form by that point in time. Um, hopefully have a, we'd have a draft warrant for you in order to discuss on the 6th. Um, and again, you would close the warrant, um, go through them, discuss them on the 6th, follow up on the 20th with any subsequent questions you have on, on any materials that were left unanswered on the 6th, um, with the hope that on the 20th, you would sign off on the warrant and be finalized. If, if you still had questions on the 20th, we would still have two weeks in order to get any other questions you had answered.
So I guess my question is this, why aren't citizens petitions due October 15th?
Because we're supposed to have a closed warrant by October 6th.
We would like to have a closed warrant. We, we would be closing the warrant at, at, on the 6th. And that way, not only in the internal warrant articles will be closed, we'll be closed to everyone at that point in time.
And the September 30th to October 6th.
But the October 20th is when we're signing off on the warrant.
You would, you'd sign off. I mean, if you wanted, if you wanted to create two different dates, I mean, that would be a possibility, but-
September 30th to October 6th gives the town clerk the time to certify the signatures of the, of the citizens petitions.
There is that, there is that timeframe allowed to, yeah, it would give ample time for, for the town clerk to do that too.
Okay. And then the 20th, I, I need to understand, the 20th, what are we doing on the 20th?
On the 20th, it would be hoped that you would have all your questions answered on the 20th, and we would actually have the warrant finalized on the 20th and posted. That way, it would give everyone 30 days' notice of the actual warrant if we had it done on the 20th.
Okay.
Maria, my take is on the 20th, we would go through at our meeting, and, and article by article, go through and review them and vote to support it or not.
I would almost hope you would do that on the 6th.
It's fine.
You know, that way, we can weed out a few, this one's, you know, however you want to work it. But I would hope, minimally, you would go through and, and start addressing some of the, the questions that you have, so we can get a jump on it on the 6th.
Right, so as they're coming in, we would know about them.
Right.
Right, because that's the only way that it's going to get approved in the same meeting where it's presented to us at, at its, in its entirety.
Well, yeah, they wouldn't necessarily have to be approved on the 6th.
Well, you just said you would like to do that.
Well, I, I would like for you to go through them, and whatever questions you have on the 6th, we become aware of the questions, so that on the 20th, we would then revisit and go back and take care of any of the questions.
And the main reason why that date's important is if we do it on the 20th, because we do not send these out to people. It does give people 30 days to go find it, go online, look at it, and whatever.
Research, question, if they have internal questions.
And these dates, if it was the regular town meeting, the annual town meeting, these dates would actually be maybe a little bit further out, because we'd have to have it at the printer to get to people of a timely manner.
These dates would be six weeks before the town meeting, everything would have to be finalized, and that would be submitted probably two, two and a half months beforehand.
So the goal really should be for the board, October 20th, it's done, it's over, it's finalized, and give the residents the 30 days to really-
That's the goal that we have in mind, yes.
Yeah.
So we can decide not to set the warrant on October 6th, if we not ready?
You wouldn't, you wouldn't set it. You would close it on the 6th, hopefully set it on the 20th.
Okay, but if we need to push it back?
If you need to, you could push it back and go- If you need to, you could push it back and go as late as November 3rd. But that would be the drop dead date. It would have to be signed on the evening of the 3rd.
Typically, this meeting is the cleanup meeting, as we've called it over the years.
Right. Cleanup meeting. I'm not anticipating anything controversial. You know, I mean, there's a few things. When free cash comes in, you know, as an example, I'm proposing money that's going to the OPEB trust fund. You know, if you guys want to, you know, just, you know, things like that. We have a balanced budget currently. We actually, we have some excess. Again, and the other recommendation is that excess is going towards debt service of, of the drainage projects, as an example. I know there are two warrant articles, I'll tell you right now, that are going to be, you know, proposed to you. I don't know what else is out there. But just those little things, we'd be taking care of things like that. Where if you had questions, we'd have, you know, time to address all those questions. But I'm not aware of anything controversial coming up.
Paul, we do anticipate funding the balance of the school project or the
Okay.
I mean, I'm not sure to say that's controversial, but I suspect that that was going to be targeted for that.
Well, you know, the question is, how do you want, the bottom line is, if
How do you want to pay for it?
How do you want to pay for it? Because if you're doing debt, it doesn't have to go to the town meeting.
Well, how much is it?
Right.
Right. If you do it by debt, we've already got authorization to borrow the money. But if we want to do it out of
Out of free cash or reserves or combinations, yes, it would have to go to town meeting.
Right. And, and I guess the other question is, you know, other than, you know, I assume we're going to have last year's bill, you know, all that kind of stuff.
There might be a few housekeeping things like that. You know, again, you have a policy of anything in free cash over $500,000 go to the operational stabilization fund. You know, again, little housekeeping items like that would take place.
But the big item is that, you know, is whether anybody anticipates things like zoning bylaw changes, which, you know, or bylaw changes in general, which I know people in the past have said shouldn't be at a special town meeting, should only be at the annual town meeting. But there are times that we've had to do stuff like that at the special town meeting. I don't know that I anticipate any, but
There's no fence issues right now.
Right. That was one that came up last year.
Yeah, it did. Okay. So do we have a motion to?
Yeah, I'll move. We accept. The timing of the article submissions is submitted in the July 24th, 2014 memo.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Yeah, Ms. Next on the agenda, Marie, Rich told me you had something about fundraising?
Right. We opened the fund last year on the ladder truck and to the public. And we did, I know the town manager and Mark Gold went to some of our local organizations. And there has been some commitment on it. And I was thinking of writing a letter to some of the other organizations in town. I'm not sure if I am allowed to do that on town stationary. That was my question.
I don't have an issue with whatever you want to write on stationary. I, my only question is, the only thing I would, I would suggest is check with council to see if there's any conflict. I mean, I don't, I
Well, I would send a copy of what I was doing to everyone.
You know what I mean? That, no, I mean, from the point that we're elected, and if you send it to something that a building has to, you know, abide by bylaws or whatever, I don't know if there's a, that would be my only recommendation, is just check, make sure. Because if it's, you know, that you're not doing something that'll get, end up
I'll check with council. And I'll also, when I prepare the letter, send it out to everybody for input.
Marie, I guess my only question is, is this a letter going particularly targeting not-for-profits who aren't, or is this, we're going to send it to businesses in town? And I guess, because that gets into, are we
No, I was, I was looking, I was looking
applying a quid pro quo in terms of contribute to the fire, fire truck fund, you know? No, I think that's what you had in mind.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I mean, because we had said things like, you know, well, we thought that not, not-for-profits and people who weren't paying property taxes ought to be asked to contribute.
Yeah. But I'm sure there's some businesses who might want to contribute unless they're asked, or, you know, no one's entered town hall with a checkbook or anything like that. But I just would just say to prevent yourself from getting in hot water.
I'll check with council. And of course, I'll run everything by the town manager.
No, but I was going to say, I absolutely have concerns about this coming from the town manager. I know, I've actually had discussions with Eric Madison. And he rightfully said he's not anybody who can, you know, go out and start asking people for money because of his position as a, as a department.
No, just show him the letter before I went forward. And I would send a copy to everyone for input. But I just want to see how, because I know we made it very clear early on that we should not use the town stationary for any, you know, just to send out our opinions and
I guess, Marie, the other question I have is, when do you plan doing this? Because what I'd like to see you do is draft the letter, come back here, and we'll both send it up.
So you'd want it to come from the whole board? I didn't know if the board was comfortable with that.
Maybe the board will be comfortable in sending it out. I don't know. It's worth a shot.
Well, I'd be glad to. Yeah, I'll send it. I'll see if, if I do have a consensus and then, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
I wouldn't have a problem with that. I wouldn't have a problem with that.
With having it coming from the board? Okay.
Yeah, neither would I.
Okay.
Okay. Next on the agenda, annual board appointments. This is from, a memo from Debbie in the packet, that we have a school building committee alternate that's vacant. I thought, I guess we are vacant. I thought, I covered one meeting for you, but we talked about that as a board in general, not as
Yeah, and I covered one. And it's just sort of been whoever's available.
All right. So there's three of us here. Mark's the school building committee representative. Mr. Prestor's excited. So that leaves, I guess we could nominate one of the other two folks who aren't here to be the alternate.
Well, I think it's also to review who's on what board. I mean, maybe, Mark, you'd like to start attending the Scantic Valley Healthcare Trust.
Or not.
Come on, here's your time.
Don't take it personally, Paul.
And I don't know if we have an alternate on the Pioneer Valley Planning. I mean, because it looks like these are annual appointments, and so we have to appoint again.
We, I know in the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, it is under the auspices of the planning board to appoint the alternate. And if they punt on it, that's when it's supposed to come to us. But they have the right of first refusal. At least, that was my understanding of it.
I have no idea.
Yeah. But I mean, you know, and I think that, quite frankly, as the, as the planning board, it probably, they should have right of first refusal for the alternate to the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. But I get, you know, we could discuss that as a board. I, I have no bo, no problems with, can I, the question with the Scantic Valley Healthcare Trust, and I, I know your name's under there, Marie, the select board has a representative technically, which is Arlene Miller. And years ago, and I've said for years that it should be someone from the select board. No, no, this has nothing to do with Arlene. But years ago, when Arlene went off the board, the board that was there punted and said, you know, you want to go handle it? God bless you, go handle it. But I always thought that the board should take the responsibility, because it is our responsibility. And I, that's what I would rather see as a select board member being that representative there.
Well, I agree with that in some ways. But the other ways, which I think we probably should be looking to, that that appointment should be made yearly also, is that she's talked institutional memory. And she is the chair of the board. So she's a very vital member of the Scantic Valley Health Trust, which we could not, I don't think anyone could replace. So I, I would say to have a board member to attend the meetings. Of course, we do have, our CFO is also there. And, but I, I wouldn't see replacing at this point in time. We're really blessed to have her there, doing the work she's doing. So I, I wouldn't look to replace her with a board member, maybe in the future when she's decided not to take that any further than we would look to see who in the community would be really vital to have in that position, because it's an important position. But I wouldn't look to replace her at this point in time. But maybe we should put her in, in other words, vote her in as the annual appointment. I don't know.
Well, the question is, is she a voting member of their board?
Yes.
Based on representative of the town of Long Meadow?
Yes.
So therefore, you're, you have not been a voting member of the
No, no. But I may, I participate and
Participate, it would take Arlene's vote if she was not present.
And it's a de facto, de facto, not de facto, de facto representation from years ago.
It's carryover representation.
From more than 10 years ago.
Oh, yeah.
At least, yeah.
It's 20 years that
I'm sure it's longer than that.
It's been in effect, yeah.
Yeah.
So I could see, you know, voting the annual appointment of Arlene Miller, and then looking if no one else is going to take it. It's really, they're really interesting meetings. I recommend, I know you've gone in the past, Mark, and have been a very important contributor to the meeting. So I just thought you might want to consider it this year.
Yeah. I'll stick with what I've got. Seriously, I mean, for a variety of reasons, not the least of which is the commitment that it makes. You know, and I, I mean, to that end, I, you know, I'd like to see getting, potentially getting Mr. Foster and Mr. Grant involved in some of these as they
I was just going to say, I think this is something we should have at the next meeting to, because if there's something they're interested in that they like to pick up on.
Yeah. I mean, clearly, I've been going to Pioneer Valley Transit Authority meetings for the last five years. And I think the only time something that came up that really affected Long Meadow was the route changes that we handled this year. And, and so it's not that big a deal. I attend, I think they have eight meetings a year that I attend, and a couple of committee meetings. So, I mean, that's, it's not overly burdensome. And it's not like we've got 15 bus routes going through there that affect many of our residents. But, you know, we've been able to, through that, at one point, we got a donation of a, of an old van to the, to the adult center. And we've been able to make sure we got the bus services that we need. But, you know, I think Walter Gunn will tell you that the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, it's important for him to be there and know and know what's going on. And I think the school building committee and the SBC hopefully is going to wind down over the course of this
Six months or so.
Yeah, this year. And so I'm not sure that that's a
Paul, can we, can you ask Stephen to follow up with Walter Gunn? I don't think Walter's the chair of the planning board right now, but whoever the chair is, to find out if they do, if they have an alternate appointed? Just so that, we want to make sure. Yes?
Mr. Colton is the
Chair.
Is the chair.
Chair. Okay. So I'm going to ask Mr. Colton. Yeah, if we can ask Bruce.
And I think there's one vacancy on the planning board?
Right. But I'm talking about if we can just check with them if they have, I know Walter's the representative, but if they have an alternate that, because they
To the PVC.
Yeah, they have the ability to appoint that. But if we can just check before we start naming someone and they already have an alternate.
So you just want to take these all as a whole and wait to the next meeting and fill in the blanks?
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, because Richard and Alex may want to jump in on something to, you know, give them the opportunity. Or, again, we can appoint them anywhere we want. They're not here.
And again, this SBC alternate is an alternate that may attend one meeting over the next six months. I don't know.
Yeah. And we can prove that at a, at a select board meeting if we had to.
Yeah. And the only value of that is that, that only the designated person and the alternate can vote. At this point, you know, I think almost all the money spent, I'm not sure how many more big time votes are coming up in the school building committee. Yeah. Can I, can I just, I don't know if we need this, because I don't know, do our appointments lapse after a year if we don't do anything? Or they stay in effect? Just, if anybody's got a meeting coming up between now and when we review these, I'd ask that these people
I would have to go back and look at the last appointments to see if there's a term stated, or if it's, you know, perpetual.
We didn't appoint Walter to the PVC. That was from, he's the chair, he was the chair of the planning board. He was the representative they selected. So I know we're okay with that one.
And I was last appointed to the Pioneer Valley Transit Authority about four years ago.
See, I mean, I have a feeling that there are just appointments without any term.
Yeah. I don't think they're terms, but they're supposed to be annuals. And we probably should start getting them in line to do this.
I'll let Rich know that. We'll add it to the next agenda and let them, it was him and Alex, if they want to jump in. Next is on the agenda, there was a citizen request for legal opinion. This was put on the agenda, I did speak with Richard, you know, to go over the agenda with him. This was put on the agenda because a citizen had sent a request for an opinion to our town council. And town council referred it back to the town manager and the chair of the select board. And what we're looking for tonight is, I guess, you know, do we want to send this request along to town council on this particular issue? That's what we're being asked. I, I don't know. I mean, I would, my own personal feeling is, we have counsel. We, the board have directed them. This is a citizen who has a question. So, I mean, you see that the letter's in your, in your packet.
I, my concern is that, of course, I understand our attorney's on retainer. But also, things go outside the retainer sometimes. So how much we've really clicked that up this year and outside the retainer, I'm not too sure and a little concerned about. And I would think this might be outside the retainer. So I'd sort of like our town manager to tell us, is this
Maria, I don't even think it's important that it's out, because the, my understanding, the last time I read the contract is, it's so many hours and then it goes over. We're at the beginning of the fiscal year, so we're probably still within it. But, you know, if you, if you use 10 hours now, and then at the end of the year, you go over by 10 hours because of something we're asking for, who puts you over the retainer? Was it us or was it the request here? So I'm, I'm not going to worry about that. What I'm going to worry about is that, A, we've got citizens asking for town, town council, you know, advice to further a citizen's issue and concern, which I believe, in this case, has already been asked and answered a couple of times. And so for me, I prefer not to have our town council, and I pardon the expression, but I'm going to use it anyway, continue to tilt at the windmills that our, our citizens put up. And maybe that's a bad characterization. I'm going to regret that. But nevertheless, the, the, you know, I, I don't think that we can allow our citizens to come back and, and ask our town council for, for advice. And, and to some degree, the letter probably should have been addressed to us. And if we were concerned about the way it was to be answered, we would have then gone to town council. But the process here bothers me tremendously. And I don't think we should be following up with it.
Yeah. And I think the letter did, it was referred to us, and that's why we're now discussing it. And, yeah, I, I think, as you said, that would be something we would decide if we really did not have the answer and we felt we wanted to have the answer. And, and again, I'm really concerned about where our legibles are going.
Okay.
I just want to add, I mean, my, my thought on this is that employees have a policy in place with the use of town council, that we must go through the town manager. And I didn't know if the select board wanted to set a policy on how they would handle this particular case, whether it's going to come to the select board, any request of use of town council by a citizen, and kind of just set that policy at this point in time or some time in the future.
We already have those. There's only two, two, two sources of opinion from town council can come from the town manager or from the select board. That's it.
Okay.
And so it's already in place.
I did not, I did not realize one was in reference to citizens. I knew one was in reference to employees.
The reference is the town council. There's only two places it can come from, is the town manager and the select board. So in essence, it does answer that.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Next on the agenda is, we need to appoint tax title custodian. There is a
Yes, I mean, very
Memo. Is there the motion? Was it, I didn't see the motion.
Yeah.
I thought you could read that.
I've got the motion.
Yeah.
Oh, there it is. Yeah, right. It's a memo.
Fine. I'll make a motion to appoint town treasurer, collector, Cheryl Kudnik, tax title custodian through June 30th, 2015 pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 60, Section 77B.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah. I assume this is pro forma based on Cheryl's appointment as our town treasurer.
Exactly. With the retirement of the previous treasurer, who was the tax title custodian. Now we're just, again, doing the formality of, you know, nine times out of 10, it's always the treasurer who is the tax title custodian. So it's just the formality of making that appointment and making it legit.
And I guess the last question is, what's, what are the main duties of the tax title custodian?
Well, if we had, if we had a, a tax title possession in our, in our place, that we would actually be the landlord, that the, the tax title custodian would actually activate the landlord, make sure the facilities are secure, make sure that the property is maintained, whether it's, whether it's removal of snow, whether it's cutting of the grass, and certain things like that. We currently do not have any possessions in place. We are
And hopefully won't get any.
Hopefully, but we are
I know.
Potentially close on one. And it would be, you know, only the third one in my 27 years here. But there is another possibility. But it would be that person's responsibility. Secure insurance, again, make sure that everything is taken care of in a landlord, I mean, I'll just say a landlord capacity.
That's all I need to know. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? No? All in favor? All right. Excellent. Any subcommittee reports?
Did Alex give one the last time when I was out? So really, nothing's changed since then, other than you're telling me we've got a date coming up. If we're really going to be doing something, we better be moving on any bylaw changes and see if we're going to put it on the fall town meeting in regards to, now, I guess the committee will undertake the capital policy.
Okay. And we have a meeting for the finance subcommittee next Monday.
And what is the finance subcommittee working?
It's posted.
Okay.
What are, what are you working on?
When my calendar comes up, I'll be there, you know?
No, you, you are. You already agreed to that. So I'm just on your calendar. Because it's going to be lonely there by myself. The agenda is budget format. Because it's going to be lonely there by myself. Uh, the agenda is budget format.
Debt, and debt policy.
And a debt policy now, yeah.
So format, are you talking about changing off the GFOA?
No, we're talking about, um, how the budget could be presented to the board to make it more understandable. As opposed to the GFOA, which is this. We want to condense it to the where we can understand it in a more fluid way.
So that would be just present.
So one of my examples is, Marie, the columns that we have, you know, that we get shown, I, I've always thought it'd be useful to have, you know, a, a, a past year prior, fully audited, the current year and current year projections. In other words, where do you expect to be this year, as opposed to then next year and whatever it is. But there, and, and maybe that's not it, but that, that kind of a thing, just so you can see what, what the numbers were as opposed to the current year's budget versus what are you actually doing this year.
Oh, that's interesting. So I, I'll send you some email.
So we're just going to talk about, that's what we're going to talk about, what would, what would look. More fluid in, in a way that we could, you know, you could look and say, okay, I see where the trend is. I see where the, the dollars are. Uh, and now the debt policy. Thank you for reminding me. So I got to add, tell Debbie to add that to the agenda. Okay. Their select board clerk report.
So the purpose of the select board clerk report, it's on the select board clerk.
That's right.
Was, this is something Mr. Foster and I spoke about, uh, and he wants to put on everyone, which is why I said, which is a recap of, of the meeting of what are we going to follow up and what's our, what's our follow up and follow through items. And, and so I just wanted to, and this is the first time through, so we're going to do this kind of cooperatively. But, but really, the follow up i- is was the capital policy is going to be going to the, to, to the, uh, operations subcommittee with the debt policy going to the finance subcommittee. Uh, we're going to take a naming policy and move that forward, uh, to our next meeting with the objective of determining where, how we want to move that forward, whether through, uh, town meeting, whether a bylaw, or whether we, we want it to be the select board or the, or the, the town manager, since this is the first, first time we saw that.
And then I had recommended maybe our chair speak to the school committee's chair for their input.
Okay, right. Okay, yeah. And, uh, finally, uh, I think that was, that was, oh, and, and we're going to follow up on our fundraising, uh, our potential fundraising letter for the, for, uh, the Quin Truck fundraising. Those are the items that I picked out. So Rebecca, if we could, uh, just kind of highlight those, you know, what we'd like to do in the minutes, and although we don't get them until, but, but just highlight them somehow with a, we were thinking of either an asterisk or something in the left-hand margin, wherever there's a follow-up item to be done. And that way in our next meeting, we'll know to pick up those and.
Well, do you mean, um, in the format, do you want me to put like a separate little section saying select board?
That'd be even better.
Report? Because that's what I just did.
Okay, that's even better.
That way you guys have like this direct list.
You just got to let her do her job.
You were going to follow up on the annual board appointments too.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
I, I was about to ask because I was sure you forgot something.
So that, that's the purpose of the clerk report, just to go through each meeting to what we're going to follow up.
It's going to come in handy when they're four hours long. The follow-up might take longer than the meeting. Okay, um, anything else? No. I have one question for Mr. Pasterzak. It's very convenient that you're here. In the.
Convenient for who?
Oh, for, for this particular question for you. Convenient for me, so I don't have to call you. I, I saw an announcement in the paper that the school department has named a new director of pupil services and that the former director of pupil services is now the assistant superintendent of learning. The question I have for you is, in the budget presentation that we were given, I don't recall that position being one under the creative position. As you went through the budget process, was that something that you were?
It was not.
That you were known about?
No, no, we, I got caught by surprise. Um, you know, I.
No, that's all, you know, that's all I wanted, just to know.
I mean, I, yeah, I was not privy to the, the change in positions there.
And I just looked at the budget presentation that was given to us and I didn't see it in there in terms of added positions because usually we get a detracted and added slide of what we're getting.
Well, I, I think the positions are still the same. It's just the people in those slots.
Well, no, there was, there was one additional hire, which is now a new director of pupil services and the former director of pupil services is now the assistant superintendent of learning.
Right, but you still have an assistant superintendent and you still have a director of pupil services.
There was no assistant superintendent of learning prior to that.
It was called something else. It was Ms. Ganji, was that her last name?
Oh, she's no longer here.
Correct.
Okay, so it's not a new position.
It's not a new position. You're still at the same two positions, it's just that one is being filled by the other.
Okay, I didn't know she left because I didn't say anything about that. Okay, so that's why, that's why I said it's convenient that you're here, so I don't have to call, okay. All right, that's all. And the other question I have is, what was the, has the final turnback been, been done or executed now that we're in a new fiscal year from the.
It, it has not been executed. Um, I'm looking at somewhere about eight hundred thousand dollars that'll be turned back.
Eight hundred?
Yes.
From the school department?
No, the full town, right.
So that's free cash?
Well, to that, we'll add our surplus revenue side, which is a little over four hundred thousand. The free cash, and we still have some free cash available from this year. Free cash should be about one point three, one point four million dollars. I believe the school department took a vote to turn back to the town in amount not to exceed four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Wow. I thought we were at the six hundred and something thousand.
We were at the six hundred thousand dollar level. They did some internal, um, capital, capital projects, um, where they're funding a little bit of the track, um, and some other carpeting projects. And I think those are the biggest two that subtracted from that six hundred thousand dollars.
That was my other question for you, since you're here and you reminded me. Thank you. Um, if we did a capital project in town, we voted at town meeting, say, to do Edgewood Avenue, for example, and the bids came in over the allocated amount and it was even beyond that little capital reserve that we have. Uh, and let's assume it's not a water project, it's just a roadway project. We can't enter into that contract because we don't have the funds allocated.
By law, we should not sign that contract because there's a stipulation that, uh, the town accountant has to sign for availability of funds.
Yep.
So she would not be able to sign that contract.
Okay, so why, why is that different than the track? Because we have free cash every year on the town side. We have turnbacks from departments.
Because there is, there is, there is a funding source that is going to cover the difference. We will not sign that contract until there is a commitment on the school side, which they've already, I believe, set up a purchase order for that difference on the track. So we do have the funding sources for the track.
Why can the school committee spend money on capital but the select board can't if it's already?
Yeah, because.
The school committee can spend money on, it's only their bottom line that is concerned.
Even a capital expenditure, that's got to be approved by the town.
Nope, there is nothing that's going to prevent them from spending money on capital.
Okay. All right, well, no, you answer that then. Um, any other comments? We need to go into executive session of, well, actually, we don't need to go into executive session. Rebecca had, I'm sorry, did you make, we do need to.
We do need to because I don't have any of those.
Okay, so we need to approve some minutes and, um, I need a motion to go into executive session for the approval of minutes, not to reopen to open session.
Yeah, I'll move. We adjourn into executive session for the purposes of approving prior executive session minutes, not to return into open session.
Second.
Any roll call vote?
Ms. Angelides?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzino?
Yes.
Do I have to say Mr. Brand?
No.
No, they're, they're not here. Okay, you can say that if you want to. It's early.
Be your long time waiting for that.
Yeah. Uh, I just want to thank everyone for watching and our next meeting is, uh, the eighteenth of October.
No.
No, it was August.
August.
Uh, August the eighteenth.
Boy, I was hopeful, huh? See, I was looking at the positive side of things. Yeah. Eighteenth of, eighteenth of, you can put that in a minute. So thank you for watching. Have a great night.